Brian, do you want to give the implication, sir?
Sir.
Family, Father, we thank you that we're able to gather here again, Lord, to discuss city's business, Lord. Lord, I want to take a moment, Lord, and request comfort for the Judge Cabot's family, Lord. She served for a long time. Please bless her family. Help us tonight, Lord, to discuss the city's business. And, Lord, we don't take for granted our first responders, Lord, and our teachers. Please keep with us. We pray.
Amen. All right, let's see here. Steve, you want to leave us in the pledge, please?
Be my honor, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Michael. Hi. Needing your. Why didn't she get one the last night? Right, praise and recognition. I want to start off with a couple things. The fire department had their event over here at Duluth Friday evening for everybody, but it really is for developmentally disabled, working with first responders and everything. And it's a good turnout. They do a great job of that. I know that's important to Chris especially. And also want to give a shout out. I didn't get to attend, but to Parks and Rec on their Jimmy Buffett tribute. Said it was very crowded, very well done. Everybody seemed to enjoy it, so. So, very good job.
It was a great time. It really was.
So, can we have any other praise and recognition? Yes, sir?
I had a family member have a medical issue this morning. I had a family member have a medical issue this morning, and our fire department showed up, class act, dove right in, hands on, got her up and off to the hospital. Man, I respect these guys more and more, but I just wanted to address it publicly and thank them for the care that they showed to my family.
Very good. Everybody okay?
Yeah, broken heel.
Good, good. That's what's important. Those guys do a great job. You all do a great job. We'd trade either one for any other department in the state. So, when I see these guys on their own carrying 160-pound dummies around the loop, just to make sure he stays in shape, it's impressive, you know, so. Anyway, all right, any other praise and recognition? Approval amendment from City Council, September 18th, 2023. Do we have any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name, motion carries. Old business resolution authorizing the City of St. Olens Fire Department Central Station to be designated as a safe surrender site.
Need a motion?
Yes.
A motion to approve.
Second.
All right, questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed name, motion carries. New business. Refer to planning and zoning commission petition to rezone lots three through six, block 50, tax map 13, parcel 24 in the City of St. Olens, 907 Sixth Avenue, from C1 General Commercial District to R2 Residential District.
I'm moving second.
Questions or discussion?
Is that the property board of this?
Well, Dr. Stevens. And you know, for years and years.
It's not really residential.
Ross Crum's grandpa lived there for years and years. Everything's residential.
You know, it's an ideal situation with the folks that bought the structure from Dr. Stevens is it was set up for handicap access in the back of the building. And the family that bought the building has a handicapped child. So, they're actually going to be able to utilize that entrance, so 100%.
Got a nice back deck already built on?
It does. And he came down on price and been there for six months.
Very good. And for loan purposes and tax purposes, it's important to also.
That's the reason with the tax, the way it was being taxed would have been astronomical for residential.
So, anyway, very good. Any other questions or concerns, discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed name, motion carries. Now, does this move on to P and Z or is it done?
No, you all just referred it to P and Z, so they'll vote, bring it back to you. You'll have to.
For a final vote?
Two votes.
Yeah.
So, you're talking December, January before it's done. And then Michael have to write up an ordinance or whatever you have to do afterwards. And then once that's complete, it's over.
Is there no way to push that process forward?
No.
Only because the family's waiting to move in, but.
Well, that's not, I was talking to Dr. Stevens and they haven't even closed yet. And it's all contingent upon it being rezoned.
Yeah, they won't close until we rezone it.
Yeah, I know, but you're looking at first of the year and there's no way to speed it up. You have to do the next month's P and Z, then two council meetings, and then after that, you're already at the end of the year.
Yeah, I think it's going to close, like council.
It's going to close, but the only thing that happened is, you know, I can't see for any reason that that wouldn't be switched back to residential. There's no reason whatsoever.
I don't either, but it's up to P and Z.
Yeah, unless somebody has a personal issue, that would be redone. Because all there's residential right beside of it, all the way down the street. So, that will definitely be a thing. So, they'll probably close and they'll probably escrow some money for the taxes from the seller to the new buyer. That's what will happen.
Mike, and also, just because it's commercial, they allow residential in a commercial area. So, if they want, they can do a lease for three months until it does close and they can move in.
They could?
Yes, yes.
You can have residential on C1.
Yeah, I've even sent a letter saying that, but the banker, whoever, was not satisfied with that. They wanted it rezoned.
I don't understand that either. I suppose they need anything like that. And generally, the buyer can go up there and say, hey, look, we're not using this for this. It's owned C1 and we're residents, and usually they'll take care of it. Without going through all that.
Taxes are pretty much higher with the commercial.
Well, I understand it, but usually if they go and talk to the assessor's office and somebody, they don't have to go through this planning and zoning stuff.
But.
I'm not sure that whenever Stevens went there that we changed it from residential or went through planning and zoning to change it to commercial, do you?
That was probably through the new zoning book that you all, you know.
That's what I'm saying. So, I don't think there was ever anything there until they came down and assessed him that he was no longer in residential.
He means the zoning that we just passed.
Oh, the new, yeah, I know what you're calling.
With that one, it was laid with commercial.
Yeah, so. All right, any other discussion? All right, very good. Suggestions, ordinance issues. Vendor license for beer sales during events on Old Main and Main Street. All right. I was looking at bringing up to council an ordinance that would allow every bar restaurant to be asked to participate on any festival on Main Street, Old Main. Okay? But since then, Councilman, large delegate halls, and I have talked. And there is a new law from the state called POTA, Public Outdoor Designated Area. Designated area, yeah. Well, and, and, and. Huntington's already done it. Charleston's in the process of doing it. Others are going to be followed behind. Now, we're not going to do it like Huntington every Friday and Saturday. They did it every Friday and Saturday. We're not going to do that. But if we list in this, and I'm going to let Walt talk here shortly, that only for festivals and events on Main and Old Main, that would pretty much solve the problem of what I was trying, what we were trying to accomplish there. But anyway, Mr. Austin.
I guess first of all, open it up for any questions if you have, but the private outdoor designated area with Senate Bill 523 that we just recently passed the legislation. It opens up a designated area defined by council, defined by the city, an area that is roped off, combed off, however you want to do it. And you require a permit to be available to any establishment willing to participate in this area. POTA, POTA areas. You provide the cups, you provide the permit, and then the establishments that wish to partake can, and the ones that don't, don't have to. And then, at that point, you're allowed to take that beverage of choice out of the establishment, onto the street, to the fair, festival, parade, whatever the case may be, as long as within that designated area. You can't leave that area. We police it accordingly. It takes the burden off of the police to see what's in that cup, what's not in that cup. Is it allowed? Is it not allowed?
The cup will say POTA.
The cups say POTA. The logo is on the cups. We establish the cups. We distribute the cups to the establishment that want to participate.
We being?
The city. The city. And at that point, it alleviates extra space for our fairs and festivals to open up to our vendors without a coolant trailer setup that takes two or three spaces.
So, they won't, they won't be.
Required to be an outdoor environment. You can have a smaller version of that, if you like, that can be set up in front of each establishment that would be able to sell, distribute that product, beverage of choice, whatever it may be.
Just maybe to hold the crowd down inside.
Well, what's the city going to make? Now, we sell the cups.
Well, it's a hundred dollar permit fee. We don't, you know, the money sold by the sale of cups for our nonprofits that organize these events, keep the money anyway. To donation back from the city. But then these nonprofits reimburse the city for expenses like public works, police, whatever the case may be. So, those services will still be available.
Is it a hundred per event?
Per year for the establishment.
Okay.
To apply.
Per year per establishment.
Per year per establishment.
Okay.
For this area is a $100 non-refundable and non-pro rated permit for private outdoor designated area. Charleston's in the process of doing it. They were going to block off Capitol Street every weekend. Mr. Del Judas and I spoke about council in this same scenario. So, we're working together to read the fine lines. I'm working with legal counsel in the West Virginia Legislature to make sure that it can be available and be designated for fairs and festivals as well. That's the only thing that's left undefined. So, I want to clear the line of that. I want to come up with another option before we get into writing more ordinances if need be. It's just, we had hoped that the establishments would work this out amongst themselves and take care of this. We wouldn't be here discussing it tonight. But unfortunately, it did not happen. So, here we are coming up with a solution that may have already been before our eyes and we didn't deny it. So, let's take care, give me some time to work on this. We'll come back with a solution for all of our establishments to have the right and freedom to sell their product, turn a profit, and generate the revenue that we all want them to have.
And basically, your boundary line is going to be, it could be from at the end of Old Main and Second Street, an alleyway to B Street.
Yes.
If we use Main Street down by the cafe in there, then we can go to Third Street like they did with Mount near Main Street.
You can reestablish your boundary line.
And down C Street to where those poles are.
Right.
And that would allow drummies to set up heat. You know, talking to him, he just wants to alleviate the crowd in the store. You know, it's not a very big place.
All they're trying to do is keep the patrons that's there for the event from just coming in, waiting in line to buy their one or two beverages and then walk back out the door.
Yeah, they want.
They want it to be available to the folks sitting down ordering dinner off the menu and in there to enjoy an evening instead of having 100 people walking through, crowding everything up and getting their beverage and leaving. If we have to do that, I just don't think we need to get in that position. We don't have to. Just maybe the solution we're looking for, that's our state law. We would just define the ordinance to match the state law instead of us writing an ordinance that may not apply or be enforceable because of the state law.
We'd have to tweak it on boundaries, things like that.
Boundaries, times, we talked about. Huntington actually changed the Friday, Saturday to Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Oh, wow.
So, every evening, they close off downtown for POTA guidelines. They can take out a beer and walk in any establishment, anywhere they want, downtown Huntington with an open container. Not container, has to be in the cup.
Ode to cup.
Ode to cup. So, we're working on it. Easier than us trying to hash out our view and discuss if a permit's needed and all this stuff. There's multi-vendor product fairs, private outdoor. There's other ways we can address this subject. It is, it is an issue. A lot of you may not be aware of it. It is an issue, but we're working on it. And I think we'll come up with a reasonable solution.
Yes, sir, Councilman.
I want to clarify just a couple things. So, I hear they will not be occupying a spot on the street, correct?
Unless.
I mean, they could still buy a spot on the street.
Unless they want to put maybe a table and serve from a table. But we hope to limit the coolant trucks for a 20 by 20 area.
Right, yeah, 24.
Yeah, and that's, my concern, and hearing it this way, is is a lot different understanding with what I come in here with this. Okay, I mean, I was ready to, like, knock leaks. So, this is much different than the understanding that.
Well, it pretty much solves the problem.
It does. And the other question, so it will also take the 501(c)(3) or the private entity, or at least the 501(c)(3) is all I care about, out of, we don't want to be the contributor.
Right.
So, we are still going to be able to stay hands off of that, correct?
Yeah, pretty much. I don't think.
We still have to.
Multi-vendor.
Right. Our nonprofits, 501(c)(3) is nonprofit designation. Needs to be out of the selection of who's going to distribute your beer and who is.
We would love to be.
Don't need to be, don't need to be put that burden on the entity, the nonprofit.
Or the foundation. And that's who I'm concerned.
And this POTA would take care of it.
And we have enough, there's 68 pages that law I read twice today.
My last question is, we will determine which events that applies to.
If it's a Founder's Day, a family-friendly, non-alcoholic serving event, then.
Like train days. Train days doesn't.
That's exactly what I meant, like tree lighting, train days.
Now, Founder's Day did serve beer. Or Heritage Day.
The tree light.
And in the region.
We don't need alcohol, person, tree light.
Yeah, right, right.
Whether they're going to be in or whether they're going to be out.
That's what I'm saying, okay.
We'll be like professionals. We need to set it back on guidelines. Trying to do this, do this.
Yeah, and somebody, there's going to be people saying, well, why don't you just do it? We got too many families down there. We got too many families in St. Olens that go to restaurants and stuff on Fridays and Saturdays. We don't want that every Friday and Saturday.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I don't think.
Yes, sir.
About the cups, like, say, you know, Yack Fest has their own little cups.
Yes.
Do we have, can we get, how do we get the POTA thing on those cups?
They would be cups that we have approved by the commissioner and by the city, and they would have to have that logo on them.
And Lee, if you all want to sell them, that means you have to check IDs and everything.
Okay, y'all. You've got to have a system in place per the rules and regulations of engagement of a designated area, checking IDs.
Yep.
Which all. It's not a conflict. All I'm trying to do is avoid nonprofits from making the money they get from selling those cups. That's a big chunk of money. If we, or the state, or the city has to pick up the tab or at least figure out where that costs, how is that cost being covered to provide those cups, up to 18-ounce cups, is what it says, then that's a question I have right now.
And we, as the committees that do the festivals, have already purchased the cups. So, I mean, it's already an expense that we take on, like Yack Fest, Fall Yawls. We all provide the cups.
My question I'll have.
But if that's a, we love it.
Would they have your logo on one side and maybe the POTA logo on the other?
Right.
That'd be fine with us. On the state approval. Any other questions?
Do we need to table this?
I would ask for it to table until first, future.
Traffic.
Information comes available.
Okay.
If it's just a discussion, we wouldn't need to table anything.
Yeah.
It's not needed. A motion is actually not.
No.
No, it's under the new business. All right.
Are we finishing? Any more comments here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The elegant councilman that holds.
Slash insurance agent.
Yeah. Slash your neighbor.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, request update to the Charter, Section 19. Elections generally amend to allow for Canal County to handle the election terms following West Virginia State Code. They do attack since we got on the state and national level. And Section 20, nomination of officers, eliminate the need for certificate of candidacy to be supported by petition following West Virginia State Code.
This is required.
No more signatories?
No more signatories.
Yeah, second.
Do we have any questions or discussion?
I'll be honest, I like making them go sign. It makes you have to work for something, but.
Does other municipalities require this?
No. Now, maybe, maybe ones in the off-year, but none of them are state and national. The county, there's nobody that's, that, in Canal County that's on the agenda with the county elections that does that.
I can throw my whole list away. I don't want to use it again.
Just have to check, make sure it didn't move, Bill. Any further comments? Question? All in favor say aye. Opposed name, motion carries.
So, you'll have to, David, you got it in there.
Yep.
In there, okay.
All right, ordinance is first reading done. Ordinance is second reading done. Finance Committee report and recommendation, Councilman Pinehurst Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. Number one, I'd like to make motion to approve payment to current invoices of a amount of $13,629.64.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed name, motion carries.
Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve for Parks Department in purchase of purchased vehicles for West Virginia State Surplus and the amount not to exceed $30,000 being paid for line item 975 that's 459.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
How many vehicles? Well, we're looking at two. Right now, they don't have any, we're going to probably tomorrow, if this is approved, we're going to get a G Grand Cherokee. It's a 2012 model. I'm going to drive that and put my truck into the fleet for the guys. And then we need one more truck. So, once we find another truck that they have that's worth anything, then we'll make a move on that one.
Our trucks and parks are pretty busted for the most part.
They're better than they were.
They are.
Yeah, they're better than they were, but I mean, we got some old ones that, that, you know, just like, you know, the old Suburban that we got, or Tahoe that we got, it's not safe anymore and I don't allow my guys to drive it anymore.
What, that white one?
No, the gray one.
Oh, yeah. That white Suburban should last you a while.
Yeah.
I hear you complaining about your vehicles, but I've asked for bare matics to come in here and discuss. I wore an out truck.
Oh, he has a out truck.
Gets around town.
But you know what? He gets one another truck. That's his second.
More out truck.
He just got rid of one, wore out worse than he's got.
He's been here 40 years. And you want to get another stick truck?
It's about his last dog, Lee.
You think we can get that for a year? Well, we're going to buy one truck.
It squeaked everywhere.
That one buried it before the one he got in half.
He earns $2,400 for a 1000.
He gets his money's worth. He damn right he does. All right, any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed name, motion carries.
All right, next, I'd like to make a motion to approve to purchase a Santa house for the Festival of Lights from Litter's Electric Supply for an amount of $11,500 to pay from line item 903 that's 459.
Second. Kevin?
It's actually Litter's in Spring. He has an address and everything. It's not just Litter's Electric House.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I have probably.
I get it. Is this going to be up at the?
This will be at roadside park on the stage. What we're going to do is, we talked about this. One of the big problems that we had during the Festival of Lights is traffic getting all just up at the top of the hill because you have very minimal parking spots up there. So, once that happens, it backs all the way down to high school and everything else gets affected. Pretty much shuts down the city on busy nights. What we're going to do is in our brochure, we're going to give the GPS coordinates for roadside park. This is where Santa's going to be at, so you can either go visiting before you go through the lights or after you go through the lights. Or if you didn't even want to go through the lights that night, you don't go see Santa.
And that going to make a traffic jam over roadside park also?
I wouldn't think so. I mean, because you're not all coming in at the same time. You're not all leaving at the same time.
And you got, there's tons of parking.
And you have a huge parking lot down there because that's not during voting season.
You could allow them to make a left turn out of roadside park?
No.
Right, right hand turn. Right now, you can't, so.
Right. No, you have to follow the, we're not going to allow the left-hand turn. That's the right-hand turn for a reason because it can be down.
The other thing is that we noticed, and I mean, COVID sucks, but when that happened, when we didn't have Santa, and not to be just money hungry, but I mean, our donations were phenomenal because people were just able to go. Not only our donations, but look, our numbers of attendance, we smashed. I mean, for three years, we were just destroying any numbers we ever had.
A lot of people were tired of waiting in that long line.
Right, but this, this gets rid of the long line.
There's no reason to stop during the Festival of Lights now. Okay, and this is also going to be a multipurpose building because during the summertime, during our events and everything else, this will give our.
Bands.
Bands or whoever, a place to come into. We'll have an air conditioning and heated as well. So, this will give them areas to get outside.
How we going to secure?
We, the boys will take care of some, some, just like we did the bathrooms down there. You saw, we had to weld some steel together and put some gates up that way.
Oh, yeah.
So. Did you say it was on the stage?
Yes, it's still on the stage on the back end.
Back behind.
You will still, this is actually a 12-foot wide, about 28-foot long building.
So, if anybody stands on.
Stage will still be in use. You'll have plenty of room in front of the building. But, so your building won't be affected. And honestly, we'll probably run some hours, just like me and Steve are talking about, have some outlets, outside outlets on the building. So, instead of running extension cords from over on the poles, we can actually hook in for our movie nights and for our bands right there at the building.
Oh, great, man. This was presented to Parks and Rec.
Yeah, last year we did this.
Yeah, this was last year, then it was approved, approved in the budget, this year as well.
Yep.
It is budget.
Any further questions and discussion?
Yeah, yes.
All right, all in favor say aye. Opposed name, motion carries.
Next, I would like to make a motion for the lease purchase for Spartan Fire Engine Comfort Truck from Johnson Emergency Vehicle Solutions in the amount of $877,403 to be paid for line item 976 that's 45901. Fire engine will be financed for 10 years via community partners with the annual payment of $116,735.
Oh, Elizabeth, it's a big one. All right, questions and discussion? Now, how long will it be before it comes in?
Well, that's the reason that we decided definitively with the Spartan. They are saying that they'll guarantee 600 days, but realistically, 15 months is the target date. Everybody else was three to four years ago from the time that we signed the contract.
Wow, where will it be stored?
This will go to Hyland, Wall Street.
Comfort truck needs a lot of trucks.
Correct. This is a small firing. I told the. This is a small fire engine, I told a couple of you guys, but.
Price went up.
Four years ago, this exact spec was four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So in four years, it's gone up over four hundred thousand dollars. And at the end of October, it goes up another two percent, and in January first, they are planning on a five to six percent increase. There's no end in sight for whatever reason.
No money's available or.
No, and we, we just got kind of through the AFG, we applied for a pumper, four hundred and seventy-five thousand toward the purchase price, but we didn't get it. We did get twenty-five thousand dollars for a bunch of fire beer, but I, I guess, I'm happy to get twenty-five thousand, get your own, but the four seventy-five would help us a lot.
Our opinion is right, so Jim.
This lies to say before the twenty twenty-seven EPA regulations that's supposed to go.
Correct, that's another good side of the Spartan, is that being that it's a fifteen to eighteen month delivery time, the twenty twenty-six model here is the new EPA standards for diesel engines. The other, all other manufacturers have to, have to install the newest generation diesel engines with newer restrictions. Spartan actually has current EPA standard diesel engines available, so we're going to stay away from the first year gremlins, hopefully of an all-new, you know, new technology, new diesel engine problem. It's a more proven, more proven engine and transmission available at Spartan versus the other brands.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Lastly, I'd like to make a motion to prove to dismiss the city service fee on a former South Charleston June High School property in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars.
It's St. Albans, not South Charleston.
Well, yes, they.
I would. That's last for me, young man.
I got St. Albans June High School property in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars, my apologies. It's on South Charleston.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Letters and reports, Councilman Rucker.
Honda Trail, Thirteenth and Fourteenth, and the Twentieth and Twenty-first. From seven PM to ten PM, City Park Trail. Anybody that wants to volunteer, as many as we can get are needed, especially young folks that'll walk that trail back and forth, it's tiring. Anybody that's there all four days will receive a pull pass for the following year, so that's, that's a nice little payout there. Fall Y'all, or, sorry, Fall Festival is October fourteenth, eleven AM to two PM, up at the ballpark field, the baseball field up at City Park. On twenty-eighth, from four PM to six PM at Marinatha is trunk or treat, and also on the twenty-eighth is the movie at Dark up at the ballparks as well at City Park, and at Dark, they will be playing Strum. Again, if you can volunteer for the Honda Trail, Tweedy would be greatly appreciated. That's all I've got for parks, if you don't mind, Fall Y'all is this weekend as well, Chili Cookoff, anybody wants to come out.
What's the times on?
Ten, I'm sorry, twelve to five.
So it'll be a good chili day, it's supposed to be down in the forties.
It is, but it's supposed to be a very minimal chance of rain if, if we have any, so it should be a good day, come out, benefit the police, the K-9 police unit, be greatly appreciated. And if you want to volunteer for that, we'd love to have you as well.
Any other letters and reports, Councilman Rucker?
Just an announcement, the city, probably works starting to get out of these.
Right, and we put out on social media, on my page, the flyer that tells when and where and how, we talked about it on the podcast the other night, if anybody asks.
I have two links in there.
All right, they, you rake them up to the curb in one pipe, not the length of your yard, all right?
Yeah.
And secondly, if somebody has a, a lawn service raking their leaves, tell them to wait till the day before their day is to be picked up, because if not, they're going to blow away and then jumboing in, get nasty calls from people, which is unfortunating, all right? And if you know of anybody that has a lawn service, have them, and we talked about that on the podcast, have them do it the day before they're scheduled to be picked up. And we also talked about the leaf factor, if it breaks down, we're going to get behind it, we'll get caught up. We got a new leaf factor coming in, when?
Around February.
February, March.
If you're going to ask a question, I can ask.
I was under the understanding, we've talked about, I've talked with Public Works several times, talked last year many a times, that we were going to go away from this same pickup as Trash Day because what happens is, we start back at Ward One every week, but we're depending on weather, and we can't just, we're ignoring the back end wards when we do that. Like if we, if we end this week with Ward Four, we go back to Ward One next week, well, five, six, seven, eight, and nine still haven't got treated. And we, we did that last year, and it, I mean, we went week after week after week without getting picked up.
Were you talking about because of the weather?
Because of anything, weather, the truck breaks down, whatever, but we need to pick up where we left off rather than at the start of each week. I mean, Ward One, Two gets hit three or four weeks in a row.
Then if we do that, then the people are expecting it on Ward One and Two that day, they're going to pile up and they're going to blow everywhere.
But, but you've got people over on the other end of Ward, that, a town that aren't getting treated at all, they're still paying the same city services as you are, but you're getting it, you're getting it weekly, and we're not getting it, but maybe every six weeks.
Do we not pick up when?
We went six weeks, I'm telling you, I had a pile of trucks.
If it's pouring down on rain.
Two size, I thought.
I think it's pouring. Yeah, if it's lightly raining, yeah, they'll pick it up.
It's a light rain?
I'm telling you, we went six weeks and I had a pile of leaves twice the size of my full-size double cab truck.
But one thing we discussed at Public Works, in Jungle Way, you can test this, and I might, may have it wrong, too, you may want to step in, but we said, like, if somebody come on Monday and they come through and do first, first grade, or, you know.
Ward One, Two.
And then they go to Ward Three and Ward Four, and they're finished in two hours because there are no leaves, that we were going to circle back around to one and two to see if there was any leaves missed and throughout the whole cable this way. Is that what I thought we agreed on?
Yeah, if they get, if they get done with their ward, there's two wards that day, then they could circle back around and get.
One and two again, if, if they're doing that.
Like if Monday, if Monday is one and two and there's no leaves or hardly any leaves, they're going to go back to nine.
Right. But, but we're saying that nine will get done if Ward One doesn't have anything. The citizens in Ward Nine pay city services.
Then we'll get picked up on Friday.
But if we don't, this one, like.
They will now, I, I'm sure.
Unless, unless it's pouring to rain down and.
Or unless the trucks.
Or if the trucks break down, they'll be picked up on Friday.
Yeah, last year was a nightmare.
Well, no, the truck broke down several times, let's see, that was our big problem.
But if they know that there's nine Friday, correct?
And also, if they don't want to, they can bag them in a garbage truck and get them.
But they pay for a service.
But be aware, be aware of that, Jungle Way, when you get a chance, if we have to miss Ward Nine on Friday because it's pouring to rain down, let's try to pick them up on Monday after we finish Ward One and Two. And to be honest with you guys, the majority of them will come urban, and the later the year goes on, unless you got that mighty, it doesn't come down until later on, all right? Yeah, that's why we're about to say. Let's just, all I would say is, just make a note, if we miss a day because of breakdown, or, or the rain down, so we know to go back when we get a chance to pick them up.
Well, we got the what's up app now, so we can get it out there.
All right, that's cool, yeah. Any other letters and reports? All right, appointments. Appointments to the city building code appeals board. Matt Reed, general contractor, term to expire ten to twenty twenty-eight. Neil Navarro, electrical contractor, term to expire ten to twenty twenty-seven. Roger Ford, electrical contractor, term to expire ten to twenty twenty-six. Jerry White, electrical contractor, term to expire ten to twenty twenty-five. Tony Knight, general contractor, term to expire ten to twenty twenty-four. Alternance Stephanie Bowlin, general contractor, and Bill Wilkerson, general contractor, terms to expire ten to twenty twenty-eight. Now, you got these folks?
Yeah.
They all live in City Limits?
Yeah, Brian Will, Brian Will did a lot of them, but, yeah, we did, we got them.
Very cool. We will need a motion to approve these.
So moved.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Appointment of Jeremy Ranson, fourteen hundred Island Drive to P and Z, to fill the unexpired term of Allen McVeigh with a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Questions or discussion?
This, this, they also have to live in City Limits?
Yes.
His address is in City Limits.
Yeah, he lives up at Highland Park.
All right.
Any other questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. All right, any other, there's no other appointments, announcements? Like Dave said, this Saturday, Chili Fest, Fall Y'all Festival, from win to win.
Twelve to five.
Twelve to five. Always a good time, always a good turnout, especially when the weather's good, and like I said, it's going to be good chilly weather this Saturday. I don't know how warm it's supposed to warm up to, but.
And I think we got twenty-five, twenty-five people cooking, twenty-four, twenty-five people cooking.
Wow, that's good. All right. Public Works Committee, Wednesday, October fourth at eight AM in the city garage. Parks Committee, Thursday, October fifth at the Hansford Center. Columbus Day Holiday, Monday, August, October ninth, city MUC offices will be closed. Finance Committee, Tuesday, October tenth at four thirty PM in the MUC conference room. City Council, Monday, October sixteenth at six thirty PM in the council chambers. Trick or treat, Tuesday, October thirty-first, six to eight PM, same as Canal County. Also, on the twenty-eighth, we have trunk or treat up at Marinatha from four to six. And also, the twenty-eighth, we have the Crawler Weed Pub crawl, all right? So, any other announcements? All right, it's now time for public forum, any resident wishing to address council, they step up to the podium, give your name, your address, you got five minutes to speak your Or nothing? Okay, all right. All right, with no apparent public forum speakers, I will entertain motion for a jury.
Motion for a jury.
All in favor, say aye.